Good morning. It's nine AM and I will call to order the October twenty-sixth meeting of the Sleen County Board of Commissioners. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Will please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that the remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brad.
For those participants in the Zoom meeting that would like to speak, you're looking for the raise hand function. On the newer clients, that function is down toward the bottom of the client screen called raise hand. On the older clients, you will need to select participants. And then the raise hand function will be revealed toward the lower right-hand corner of the screen. That lets the host know that you would like to speak. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. At this time, we'll move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county business and government usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? And please state your name and address.
Dalton McDowell, Slinna. On Waterwell, not Waterwell, Burma Road, is that ever going to get repaved past the landfill? That whole section of road there from Crawford all the way to the McPherson County line is a disaster.
Okay, we'll look into that. Okay, thank you.
Norman McDowell, Slinna. Next Tuesday is Election Day. Kind of reminds me of a country western song. Vote the bums out.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of disposition of property, approval of OCCK letter of support to KDOT, treasure onboard for Walnut Township, approval of KSU memorandum of understanding and talk group authorization, approval of Kansas Army National Guard Sline Range memorandum of understanding and talk group authorization, approval of payroll as presented, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda as presented.
Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, we'll move into action items. Item one.
RFA two-four-eight dash two-one, amendment number one to county administrators employment agreement with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This request is requesting signature on the attached amendment number one to the employment agreement for county administrator Philip Smith Haynes. The alternatives for action would be to approve and sign the amendment, do not approve the amendment, or delay action for additional information. Our recommendation is to approve and sign the amendment. That amendment allows for additional compensation of the county administrator if the commissioners choose to do so. It also allows for the granting of additional vacation leave if the commission chooses to do so. There is no additional impact for 2022. The compensation was set with the original employment agreement. This amendment allows for additional salary to be set each renewal term to grant an additional forty hours of vacation for 2022 and to grant vacation leave annually as a part of the additional annual renewals.
Okay. Is there any comments or suggestions by the commission?
One question, since this isn't an agreement between the commission and the administrator, does the administrator also have to agree to this?
Correct. There would be a signature signifying approval by both the county administrator and county commission.
And this was drawn up by?
Mike Montoya, county counselor.
I think it should also be noted that this forty hours of vacation for next year is in lieu of an additional or a raise in pay.
Correct.
Any other comments? Anyone from the public would have any comments? Seeing none, I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Quickly on the discussion side of that, are we approving an additional forty hours of vacation in 2022 with this amendment?
Yes. Yes, you could do that.
I'd like to comment on that. This past year has been very taxing, very trying on our administrator, getting the jail project going, getting the county through COVID to this time and date. And I think it's very deserving that he needs to rest his mind too and do the best job. So I'm in favor of it.
Yes, and in lieu of that, I think as a county commissioner, I want to just thank and applaud the whole county staff, you know, that works underneath the administrator that I think they've done a fabulous job in taking care of this whole COVID thing and working through it either from home or in the offices that they are working in. So I want to make a comment on that too. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments? It's been moved and seconded?
Nope.
Okay.
It will be in a second.
All right.
Are you going to?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve amendment number one to the county administrators employment agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-four-eight dash twenty-one, amendment number one to county administrators employment agreement. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into item number two.
RFA two-five-three dash two-one, referral policy with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Morning, Marilyn.
Morning again. Like other employers, Sleen County is encountering challenges to find qualified candidates for our positions. In December of 2020, the county commissioners approved a temporary referral incentive of fifteen hundred dollars for corrections officer positions. Five hundred dollars was paid at six months of employment, one thousand dollars at one year of employment, of successful employment. The referral incentives have been found to be successful in filling some of those vacancies. The current incentives are paid from the department's budget. So they have dollars there available due to vacancies, so that helps fund these. We do utilize various recruitment resources such as online, print, newspaper, newsletters, radio, social media, college recruitment boards, and career-specific organization recruitment boards. In an effort to use our best resource, our employees, we request approval of a referral incentive policy to reward employees that refer successful applicants that are hired across all departments, not just the sheriff's office. The countywide referral incentive is recommended to pay two hundred and fifty dollars on the next available payroll check after the referred employee's hire date, and then seven hundred and fifty dollars paid after completion of one hundred days of satisfactory or better employment. Other terms and conditions apply as indicated in the attached draft policy. The draft policy was reviewed by department heads and elected officials with majority of responses in agreement with the draft as presented. However, there were comments centered around the eligible staff for the referral incentive. And so those items were should all department heads or elected officials, deputy department heads, division heads be exempted, or just the department head or elected official, since the hiring decision does rest with the department head or elected official? And then the other is should the direct first-line supervisor be exempted, or should they be allowed to refer a candidate since the final hiring decision rests with the department head or elected official? So the alternatives for action would be to approve the policy as drafted, approve the policy with edits as indicated in numbers one and two above, do not approve the policy, or delay the action for additional information. The recommendation is to approve the policy as drafted or with the edits, whichever you decide to provide us an additional resource for increasing our applicant pools. The referral incentive pay would be paid from the hiring department's existing personnel budget and subject to the department head or elected official's spending authority. If incentives are in excess of the spending authorities, such as with very small departments, a request can be submitted to the county administrator or their designee for consideration. And then suspension of the program can occur if found to be ineffective or for any budgetary reason. I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
So Marilyn, this, in addition, this is in addition to the bonus that we're paying, the sign-on bonus, so to speak, we're now going to pay employees for referrals. That is?
The hiring incentive is only for corrections officers, trying to get us some additional corrections officers. So what this would do, it would allow for referring employees for all departments across the county, not just the sheriff's office. So for instance, if somebody made a referral for somebody in the vehicle registration office or the county appraiser's office, if somebody made a successful referral, we want to reward that employee.
I guess, I guess what I'm going to say is that I'm not in favor of that. I am in favor of continuing the, the bonus, the sign-on bonus for, and I could even go so far as to say for the entire county, but I, the referral portion of it doesn't sit well with me.
Marilyn, as far as budget impact, if these departments have vacancies and there's salaries that aren't being paid out, so it shouldn't have a negative impact on their budgets or?
Correct. I think the only thing that it might have an impact, and that's why we have that line in there about approval of the county administrators, maybe if it went over to a different budget year. Let's say somebody, it was vacant towards the latter part of the year, and then we run into a new budget year starting in January. So there, there could be a situation where the dollars weren't quite available, so we wanted that mechanism where the county administrator could approve that if funds are available somewhere else.
Well, we are, we are competing with a lot of people for possible hirees, and I know with many years in the fire service, some of the employees that came onboard were, were recruited by those that were already there. And they had a lot of longevity as far as their career. So I really believe with the minimum impact this would have on a budget and the positive it would have on, on keeping our employment up, I'm in favor of this.
Agreed. poorly. That's a good point. Anybody else? Any other comments?
I'll put you on the spot. This work?
I think we found it successful with corrections. Sheriff is in the audience here and he might be able to agree to it. It, we were able to get some referrals and get some corrections officers when we were very short-staffed. We were double digits short in corrections, and we were successful in getting people on board with that.
Well, recruiting qualified applicants is gold and objective, and so I hope it works. I hope it passes.
Commissioner Wees, what do you think about the edits? Do you have a feeling on that? I mean, you're supportive of this whole thing?
I'm, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. I'm sure that they've thought this out and taken those into consideration.
We are already exempting anybody that might be a part of a job fair because they are there recruiting, so anybody that does that would not qualify. And then additionally, human resources staff would not qualify because that's our job too, is to try to get successful candidates in the departments. The questions that we had were should the staff below a department head or elected official be eligible or not? That is what's questionable, and that's what I would like to get the county commission's feeling on that piece.
Well, I guess my question would be what, what do you see other counties doing in this situation?
I actually modeled this after another county.
Yeah.
So they do exempt department heads, elected officials, deputies, as in deputy directors, and also first-line supervisors.
Again, I appreciate you putting that in because that does make sense. I mean, there's, there's a little bit of a conflict of interest there. And if you see that other places are doing that, then I kind of like the policy with those edits.
To restrict all of those positions or exempt all those positions.
Anyone from the public could would like to speak. Seeing none, I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the referral policy as presented.
Since there's no second?
Question of information here. As it's presented, is that staff recommendation number three that we're vote, that we're voting on?
Staff recommendation would be yes. I think there are certain positions that we should exempt from it because that is our job as department heads, elected officials, division heads, even first-line supervisors. I think that, that is our job to be trying to get people. So I think as the policy is drafted, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, I was just confused because as drafted or with edits, it seems like there was two different recommendations here.
The, the edits would be if you would like to allow those positions underneath the department head, such as the supervisors and deputies and assistant directors to be able to do it, to be able to call.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I go back to Commissioner Shadwick's questions on that and, and ask, ask Commissioner White, is, is his recommendation as drafted with edits or as, as drafted?
As drafted.
If that is the motion, I will second that.
Okay, the motion has been and seconded that we approve RFA number two-five-three dash twenty-one referral policy as drafted. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item three.
RFA two-four-nine dash two-one, emergency management performance grant with Michelle Barkley, human emergency management director. Good morning, Michelle.
I'm here to request for the application of the 2020 emergency management performance grant to enhance and sustain the emergency management performance within Sleen County. We've participated in this grant for many years. It's a fifty-fifty match, which we use the emergency management director and the administrative assistant budget for salary and benefits to provide that match. Last year, we were awarded this grant in 2020, and we received thirty-three thousand, three hundred and three dollars. The state has assumed it'll probably be around the same amount if we apply again. So staff recommends that we apply for the grant to use these dollars to fund the deputy director position and to sustain all hazard emergency management programs in Sleen County.
Great. And how's that new person working out? Is this going to be worth it?
Yes, I promise.
Right, okay. All right. Any other comments by the commission? Any comments by the public? Seeing none, I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the emergency management performance grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-four-nine dash twenty-one, emergency management performance grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four.
RFA two-five-two dash two-one, bid award for utility train vehicle with Sheriff Roger Solden.
Good morning, Sheriff Solden.
Good morning, commissioners. This RFA, we've seen a need for an off-road vehicle, utility train vehicle for rescues and crime scene for places that you couldn't drive a patrol car. It's been something that we've had a need for for years, and matter of fact, I've used my own personal one for a few, a few instances, but I sold it recently, so seeing the need, I did request bids. We worked with purchasing, and we put out bids for utility train vehicle. Sealed bids were received, and we had three bidders that retrieved, that received bids, one from Logistics Three-Sixty-Five from Norfolk, Nebraska, for a 2022 Polaris for twenty-seven thousand dollars, two, twenty-seven, two-seventy-seven ninety. Received a bid from Straw Power Sports, a great bin, for 2022 Polaris for twenty-five, five forty-five, and a bid from BRPU S of Plano, Texas, for a twenty-two, twenty-two Can-Am for twenty-four thousand, seven ninety-five forty-two. Our recommendation from the sheriff's office is to award the bid to BRPU S Incorporated of Plano, Texas, for the 2022 Can-Am in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven ninety-five forty-two. This will be funded from our registered offender fund. This wasn't a budget item that I requested, but we have currently had, at the time of this RFA, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six ninety-three in that fund. Just as a note, that fund's be used solely for law enforcement purposes, not to be offset the amount that the county gives us for normal equipment, and this isn't a normal piece of equipment. We've never had one, so it'd be additional equipment for law enforcement rescue purposes.
Quick question here. Is this type of devices, are these out on government bid items that they can go out and anybody in the government can purchase these? Just like we do certain, we can go out for bids for sheriffs' patrol cars and stuff like that, that are out there on?
And that's what we, we actually did. We, and we did send it to, as a matter of fact, that BRPU S is the law enforcement division of, of Can-Am.
Okay, all right. And second, I mean, if there's a warranty place to be handled on this, on the device, if there's an issue above them?
The nearest Can-Am dealers in Hutchinson.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all the questions I got. Anything else?
Sheriff, I'm a little bit concerned that there weren't any local bidders. I mean, I know there's, what, I don't know how many people in, in Sleen County that sell this type of equipment. Did, I mean, could they not meet the specs, or why would they choose?
I don't know why they did. They chose not to bid. You know, I don't, I know that it was sent to them. They were on the bidder's list that we send out the, the bids to. Why they chose not to bid, I do not know. Probably a little difficult because I also know that Logistics Three-Sixty-Five is another, is another group that does the government contract type bid.
So in this case, we have went beyond just posting it on our website or just putting it on Facebook or whatever, however, we were actually sent these to the, the local people.
Yes.
Bid requests.
Yes.
Hmm. Okay.
Okay. So Sheriff, this isn't a toy. This is actual, actually a tool that you utilize.
Yes, this is a tool. Matter of fact, I know your tool got utilized recently when there was an incident.
Well, there was a.
Ended on your property.
There was a man that northwest and the landowner gave access to his four-wheeled assist and.
It was much appreciated because cars don't go everywhere, unfortunately.
That one sure didn't.
No, it went everywhere until it found a tree.
Sheriff, is this a side-by-side? Am I using the right terminology?
Yeah, it's a side-by-side. It's a, it's a six-seater, and it has an enclosed cab with heat and air conditioning, which is kind of a, a new feature for, which kind of, that does restrict some companies from bidding, but it would have heat and air conditioning. So if we have a guy that's sitting at a crime scene, like recently, we had found the skull, and we didn't have anything we could drive in there with first day because it was too muddy, but the farmer took us in there. Well, if you have somebody sitting in a crime scene like that, overnight in the summer is pretty unpleasant with mosquitoes and whatever, or in the winter. So this would be, give us an option to have someone in climate-controlled piece of equipment.
Cool. Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public could like to speak. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of the utility train vehicle as requested in RFA two-five-two dash twenty-one.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-five-two dash twenty-one, bid award for utility terrain vehicle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five.
RFA two-five-four dash two-one, bid award for thermal imaging. RFA two five four dash two one bid award for thermal imaging cameras with David Turner, Rural Fire District Number Five Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Turner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, District Five was given approval to solicit grants for two thermal imagers on September seventh in accordance with the grant award from Department of Homeland Security. Uh, we solicited bids. Uh, we opened them on October thirteenth. At that time, we received only one bid from Wise Fire for two Bullard NXT eighteen, eighteen oh one compliant thermal imagers. And their bid was for seventeen thousand, nine seventy-two sixteen. And as, as I said, this is a uh, uh, grant from Department of Homeland Security, so our cost match is five percent of the total. Uh, so it's relatively um, won't impact too much of the budget, so um, I don't know why we only received one bid. It may have been because some of the uh, other manufacturers uh, may not have eighteen oh one compliant thermal imagers. Uh, that's the only thing I can figure out. Uh, and that is a grant with Department Homeland Security, they have to be eighteen oh one compliant. So that's my only reasoning for only receiving one bid.
The one thing that was pretty interesting is, is that this isn't something that you just go out there on the web and just solicit. I mean, it is through dedicated.
Yeah.
Uh, soliciting companies. So yeah, that's a real deal. Any other commits? Comments by the commission?
Question, Chief, did they uh, give you a delivery date?
Uh, four to six weeks. From time of order.
Cool, okay. Any other comments? Any comments by the public? Seeing none, uh, we'll bring it back to the commission for possible discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of the thermal imaging cameras as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two fifty-four dash twenty-one bid award for thermal imaging cameras. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You bet you do. Item six.
RFA two five zero dash two one District Coroner Contract. I'm assuming with Philip Smith Haynes.
Playing the role of Hannah Stanbaugh this morning will be uh, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes.
Good morning, Mr. Philip.
Good morning, uh, Commissioners. So Kansas State Law uh, requires that the largest county in each judicial district appoint a district coroner. The district coroner actually has a term of office, which is four years. And uh, our current contract with the uh, current coroner, Dr. David Doopie, will be expiring at the end of this year. Um, Deputy County Administrator Stanbaugh contacted Dr. Doopie. He is willing to serve for another four-year term through the um, uh, end of twenty twenty-five, beginning of twenty-six. And so we have prepared the attached agreement for commission approval. Uh, this would uh, gradually increase his compensation in line with whatever is awarded to county employees each year. Um, so your alternatives for action are to adopt the resolution appointing Dr. Doopie for the next four years and sign the contract. Or to direct staff to renegotiate terms with Dr. Doopie. Or to direct staff to um, enter into contract negotiations with an alternate physician. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. I have a question. Maybe I'm a little confused here. Uh, when you talk about a district coroner, is, is this area larger than Saline County? Is he working for other counties? And if so, how is uh, how, how are the expenses divvied up?
That's a great question, Commissioner Reese. So yes, so it is the district coroner for the twenty-eighth Judicial District. The twenty-eighth Judicial District consists of Saline and Ottawa Counties. And so we do bill Ottawa County annually based on their share of the total population of the district. So five over sixty or whatever the applicable proportion is. Um, and so we, we do uh, receive a check from them annually for their share.
Okay. Just a point of interest, do, do you know how many times we um, relied on the, the coroner in the past year? Or how many times he was put to use?
I do not have a number off the top of my head, but I will say that um, the budget for the coroner's office is um, much closer to um, the allocation for twenty twenty-one than it was for twenty twenty. Um, I know that from, from doing the quarterly budget review and so I think we're um, utilizing him unfortunately more this year than we did last year.
Wow, okay. Any other comments? Any comments by the public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I press that the uh, we adopt um, request for action two fifty dash twenty-one signing of the contract for uh, Dr. David Doopie for twenty twenty-two and uh, concurrent three years after that.
Second. Is one more comment?
And could I request of the maker of the motion that that also include adoption of Resolution Number Twenty-one dash twenty-three forty-three? Cause there's a resolution attached as well as. Thank you.
Second that also. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the District Court Coroner Contract with the resolution, addition of Resolution Number Twenty-one dash twenty-three forty-three. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those both, same sign? Motion carries. Except that approve RFA number two fifty dash twenty-one District Cor- Coroner Contract with the addition of Twenty-one dash twenty-three forty-three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Now.
I kind of got lost in that.
Well, well, when I, when I did that, I forgot to mention that the, this was approval of RFA number two fifty dash twenty-one. And I just went directly to the Resolution uh, Number Twenty-one dash twenty-three forty-three. So how would I fix that, Mr. Administrator?
Um, well, I.
There's nothing to fix, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I just, um, my minutes go off the motion of whoever makes it, so.
Okay.
So it's.
All right. All those in favor, so, oh, we've already. Motion's been passed. Or did we?
Twice.
Twice, okay. Motion's been passed. Okay, thank you. Got me. I thought I'd really messed up again. But you know. Item number seven.
RFA two five one dash two one Rural Housing Incentive District Funding Agreement with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Philip.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Uh, so this is a story that you have heard before, uh, next verse. And it's regarding um, a rural housing incentive district on uh, South Ohio Street, uh, a little bit south of Schilling Road that's known as Southview Estates. And we have been approached by the city of Salina about uh, utilizing this tool, the RHID, which has never been used in this community before. Uh, have, this has been discussed, uh, like I said, a few times uh, with your commission. Um, most recently, August thirty-first, um, we brought an action before the commission to decide whether to protest the formation of an RHID for Southview Estates. At that time, the commission adopted staff's recommendation of the county not object to formation and return with an agreement for potential use of ARPA dollars toward eligible development costs for the um, development. And uh, you also on August thirty-first um, approved the framework for expenditure of the ARPA funds, which contemplates this same uh, contribution. This was all done because it was anticipated that the city of Salina would have a public hearing to form the RHID on September thirteenth. However, um, on September fourteenth, I explained to the commission that, that public hearing had not occurred because of a noticing issue. And the public hearing was rescheduled to October eighteenth. During that time, uh, the city and county have continued to work the, out the details of a potential uh, inter-local agreement regarding the county's potential contribution to the project. On October eighteenth, the Salina City Commission did pass their ordinance, which created the Southview Estates RHID and triggered the start of the thirty-day protest period during which uh, the county, the school district, other affected taxing entities could protest the formation of the district. So at this time, um, just asking you to reaffirm your prior direction that we will not be protesting, but also to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between the county and the city of Salina, which creates a process whereby the county will work with the developers of Southview Estates to identify ARPA eligible costs and transmit those to the city for pre-approval. Once the work is complete and accepted by the city, the county would make payment for eligible costs and submit a request to the city for reimbursement from the future tax increments. Again, the purpose of this agreement is really to um, sort of um, ameliorate the effect of the reduced tax revenue that the county would otherwise experience by allowing the redirection of the tax increment from the improvements at Southview Estates. The county would not be uh, collecting normal taxes for a period of up to twenty-five years uh, on the um, improvements at the site. And uh, this sort of allows the county to collect something during that period of time, which we would essentially be in the position of a creditor of the project rather than a taxing entity. Um, I know that's a little bit confusing, so I'll stop rambling and be happy to answer questions.
Has that property been annexed into the city yet?
Um, I believe it has been. Um, I think that was part of their um, motion. Uh, no, actually, I'm sorry. I believe that property was previously annexed into the city. There was another project that was recently annexed into the city.
Also, uh, we're being asked to approve something here that they haven't determined, the city has not determined whether it's going to be a twenty or twenty-five year tax abatement or whatever. Did I hear you say that? Or has, has?
You did not hear me say that. Then the city's passage of the formation of the district contemplates an abatement period of up to twenty-five years. Twenty-five years is the maximum under law. Uh, it could be shorter if the tax increment comes in more quickly, but it would not be longer than that.
But I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that, that, that they haven't. How does that uh, length of the, of the uh, agreement, how does, how does that come about? When, when, when does that come about?
Law.
Pardon?
State law. The state law that creates the possibility of the rural housing incentive district says it's a twenty-five year maximum. The city could have, by agreement with the developer, could have gone for a shorter term. Some other jurisdictions around the state that um, that use this tool have done that, have, have sort of adopted a policy that says we're not going to go the full twenty-five years. We're going to do something shorter. Um, the city has not adopted that policy, such a policy. And um, their agreement with the developer, which is where all this is spelled out, calls for up to that full twenty-five year term.
And, and that's where I'm getting, that's where I'm getting at. It's up to, so there hasn't been a firm term set in there.
Again, it's, it's up to, it, it's only less than twenty-five years if the taxes come in higher. So it's, it's twenty-five years is the maximum under state law. If valuations go up dramatically in the next eighteen years, it could potentially pay off quicker.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Catching on.
Okay.
Phil, could you walk us through Section E of the contract um, involving the Saline County Treasurer and how the mechanics of, of hi- his obligation to this is?
So um, this is again, part of what is um, contemplated under state law is the um, the fact that the property owners, whether it's the developer or then subsequently when the lots are sold, they pay their taxes to the county treasurer, just like everybody else in the community, right? Whatever the mill levy is at that time, they, that gets applied to their valuation and they write a check or their mortgage company writes a check. And what happens though, once it gets to the treasurer is different than what happens with your taxes or my taxes. With your taxes or my taxes, those get distributed that we pay in December. In January, the treasurer distributes those taxes to all the affected taxing entities. With an RHID, the treasurer does not distribute the taxes to the taxing entities. The treasurer distributes the twenty-one and a half mils to the state. And then everything else goes to the city of Salina. And it goes to the city of Salina to be held in an account whereby they then pay back essentially one twenty-fifth of the financed costs that are eligible under the RHID law. And so typically that is a payment to the developer, the developer's bank um, for whatever costs they have laid out at the beginning to um, you know, fi- finance the improvements that are eligible. In this case, if your commission decides to enter into this agreement, um, there would be a share that would go to the developer, developer's bank. And then there would also be a share that would go to the county for our contribution of eligible water and wastewater improvements that are um, ARPA eligible costs. So let's say, I think that the total contemplated in, in Southview Estates is around seven million-ish. Um, so um, that, that would essentially get split. Um, one million to the county, six million to the developer. And then each year, um, for up to twenty-five years, we would get back a portion of that, you know, one-seventh. But the um, you know, the, from, from the treasurer's standpoint, that paragraph E just talks about the fact that the treasurer is going to send those funds to the city rather than distributing them to all the taxing entities. Um, yeah, so. And yeah, so under, and we're dealing with a couple of different pieces of law here, the, the, the state RHID law, and then there's the federal ARPA funding, right? And so under the state RHID law, there are eligible expenses which are hard costs plus the cost of financing. So things like putting the asphalt down for the streets, right? But also a few things like putting up signage and, and then the cost of, of the financing. Those costs are not, those costs are eligible under the state law, but they're not eligible under ARPA. So under ARPA, the only thing that's eligible is the water and wastewater infrastructure. So that would be what the county would contribute, would be just the cost of putting those water and sewer lines in the ground. And then the developer would still be on the hook for the roads, the cable conduits, all that other stuff. And that's why their share is a little bit larger.
Well, the part that resonates with me is, is in section four. And that is the recommended action will have no impact on the county's adopted budget. And therefore, I'm in favor of this needed housing. And this is kind of the way of the world that's gone by, not just in Seline County all of a sudden, but in the state and in the entire United States, that the developers need this type of incentives or this, this help to be able to, to pursue these, these housing requirements that are coming before Salina and Seline County. After all of that mumbo jumbo, I'm in favor of it. Of adopting the, the proposed.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner. Unfortunately, the free market system is not working in a perfect manner. And if it was, we would just let the market decide what is happening, but that's not, it's not working. So I'm, I'm in agreement with you. You know, it's, it's a small nudge towards helping somebody solve a critical need that we have in the community, in the county.
I just want to say that it's like, I'm for this a hundred percent, and I, I agree. The only thing that I have the issue with is that, first off, why are we at this position right now? I mean, I know that that, that land has been available to build on for quite some time, but what are the real reasons why it hasn't been developed? If this, I think if the city would have justified having this process in place five years, six years ago, if it was such a problem, we'd already have houses built there. But on the other hand, it didn't. We're here at this position and here again with the county, we can, if there's anything we can do to help and approving this RHID will help. I think that's the thing that we need to do right now. I just wanted to mention that. Any other comments?
Commissioners, I'll share some of my thoughts. And five years ago, we were presented from the city of Salina, some of their proposals. They hired a consultant. And in five years' time, that contract evidently expired. And they turned around five years later and hired the same consultant, basically to, instead of addressing the housing shortage, now it's a crisis. And that's my frustration. It doesn't appear to me like the city has been using any of these tools out there to utilize these housing developments. And that's just one of my frustrations. I don't quite understand the way the city folks do their thing, but I, I hope we can contribute our ARPA money and help get this project going and address the crisis.
Okay, any other comments? Any comments from the public?
Norman Adams, Salina, Kansas. Yes, it is a world problem. But China is addressing this issue. Building new housing is just a short term fix. The issue is as your population increases, so do your problems increase. Even a spokesman from the jail contractor agreed with me. He said, yes, it's a population growth issue. We need zero population growth. Because we're destroying the planet by utilizing, destroying our resources. So we can have a population zero growth or a reduction. This is just a short term fix. China is making it work. Reduce the population, as that spokesman and I said, and we agreed. That will solve the problem.
Okay. Any other comments? Anyone from the public? I see this development project back here. Anyone from there would like to speak? Okay, are you sure? Okay, you need to come up here and give your name and address. Please. Oh, no.
Hartland Housing Partners, Kansas City. Just appreciate the city staff and then appreciate your staff and working. Mr. Smith Haynes, and it's been a long, hard effort. And to Mr. White's point, we were here, I was here five years ago, not with these guys and, and maybe some of these issues, we wouldn't be sitting here today, but we are and appreciate your comments. And, and I want to say, beyond appreciating you guys, also appreciate the developers because I do this across the state region. And I haven't seen developers make an effort to build something that actually fits the socioeconomics of the community, meaning you're meeting family income here in Seline County, I think it's around fifty three, fifty four thousand. And this project actually fits that. Normally what we see is, hey, we built this and this is what we want to get built and we're going to build it here and we hope the market gets there. So, and, and certainly, I think another one that speaks to are your employees in your county. And it fits right in to the type of, of money that they make. So just appreciate everybody and hopefully this will be a jumpstart to community. So five years from now, the market actually will work. And, and this is a good start. I hope there are more projects to follow from other, other groups, although that's a slow process. We heard five months ago as we started this, oh, all these projects are coming and, and we haven't seen much behind us, but we hope. Us developers aren't very smart. We usually follow when someone looks like they're successful, we come running. So that's, we hope that's what happens here in Salina and here in Seline County. So thank you, guys. Thanks for your consideration.
And thank you. Okay, anyone else? Like to speak? I will bring you back to commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the rural housing incentive district funding agreement is outlined in RFA two five one dash twenty one.
Second.
Is been, been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two fifty one dash twenty one rural housing incentive district funding agreement. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into informational items. Item one.
Idle fund report with Jim DeBois, county treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Jim DeBois.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, talk about the market and interest. I'm going to give you the third quarter idle fund report. And I'm going to start with the year 2020. In 2020, we earned sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars. This year, so far, we have earned seventy thousand, a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars and ninety five cents. So there's a difference of earnings of one thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty four cents. Our total interest as of September the thirtieth is a hundred and ninety nine thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars and twenty five cents. Our goal still is to hit that three hundred thousand dollar mark. I'm still pretty confident. I've talked with a lot of bankers and I've talked with financial consultants. And they do kind of feel like that the interest will hopefully prevail and, and will do fine towards the end of the year. So cross your fingers, hoping for the very best on that. Any questions on our idle funds? Okay, if not, I want to move real quick into the bond proceeds funds, which is your second page of that. Our third quarter bond proceeds funds, all of our funds right now are in the municipal investment pool with the state of Kansas. And I, I think we've explained that to you. Number one, the bank didn't want to take it because they're going to have to to pay the insurance to hold and secure that. The state of Kansas will. So right now we're making a point zero three percent interest off of that. So we have, in third quarter, we earned two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars and eighty cents. Interest earned as of September thirtieth, that's eight thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars and seventy six cents. Starting in January, we'll probably be moving some of that money into the general account, giving our administrator the funds so he could pay bills as they come due with the jail project. Any questions on idle funds for that? Okay. And then finally, I, I wanted to tell you, and I think I explained this to you last time, which I thought was kind of, kind of exciting to me. You know, as we get ready to go into tax collections and I've been working with the clerk and hopefully all the other counties get all their levies and everything in and we kind of go from there. As of today, we have collected ninety eight point five nine percent of our taxes, which to me is phenomenal. Compared to last year, which was also good, but in the year twenty nineteen or the twenty nineteen taxes, I'm sorry, we had ninety eight point oh three. So we're still doing well as a county. We're collecting funds in. We are working with people that have been delinquent. And we're moving forward. Any questions? I got the easy part. Okay.
Are you sure?
No. We'll see at the end of the year. But I, you know, you want to be optimistic and remain positive. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item two.
Quarterly budget update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again. Well, Treasurer DuBois's idle funds report flows nicely into the quarterly budget update, which is overall very, very positive news. We are doing quite well across funds, but particularly the revenues in the general fund. I know treasurer would like to have a little bit more in interest earnings, but we are doing quite well, particularly in our sales tax, our senior center revenues, our rentals at Expo, all, all of those things, the planning revenue and registered deeds as well. Doing much better than, than twenty twenty and better than twenty nineteen as well. And some of those things in twenty twenty were a little impacted by COVID. So you know, I, no real signs of trouble on the horizon in terms of the county budget. We did, in the course of reviewing, this is a good practice because we did discover that there were some expenses that were incorrectly coded as revenues in one of the road and bridge funds that has gotten corrected by journal entry and everything is back in line on that. But positive report and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your update. Item three.
County administrators update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
All right, here we go again. So number of things to touch on today. First, I will mention that I attended a economic trends meeting that Wichita State puts on. They sort of do a circuit around the state and visit various communities and, and talk about the economy. And, you know, I was very interested in that. You know, sort of given all the things that we're hearing about the global economy and, you know, employment and so forth. Housing, they did have a panel that talked about housing locally. They also, one of the interesting pieces touched on recruitment challenges. HR Director Marilyn Lemer was here earlier in your meeting to talk about some of the recruitment challenges that we face as a county, but that is something that the economists are seeing around the state of Kansas, not just in Seline County and across industries, not just local government. And said that they actually have some sort of bad news for employers, good news for households, but bad news for employers is that this trend is not temporary and is not going away soon. That we are in a tight labor market and they are predicting that we're going to be in a tight labor market for several years into the future due to a whole bunch of, of factors, including your baby boomer retirements and childcare issues and housing issues and, and, and all sorts of things. But one of the hopeful signs, again, hopeful for households, not so much for employers, that one of the trends they have seen during the pandemic is that folks have been able to sort of move up the economic ladder as as jobs at higher wage levels have become available. They've seen folks sort of moving up and that that's a net positive benefit for the entire economy. It's just painful for those of us who are trying to recruit, particularly entry level folks. So it was a very worthwhile. Appreciate attending that. And I've, I've been to it in the past. It's always very good. Also went to the Kansas Association of Counties Conference. A couple of you were there as well last week. Probably one of the most interesting sessions that I went to at KAC was around cybersecurity. And we know that cybersecurity has been a real challenge, has been a focus area for our IT staff here at Seline County. They talked a little bit about the fact that Potawatomi County has recently been hit by a cyber attack and, and provided some tools that, that I'm sharing with, with Brad on our IT staff. We also had the county administrators meeting on Wednesday. That was very good. We went right up until time. Everybody had a lot to say, particularly around ARPA funding, what everybody's doing. And so some good ideas there as well. A couple of upcoming meetings, talk about some past meetings, talk about some future meetings. So just as a reminder to the community, we are breaking ground on a new jail and sheriff's office. And we managed to pick the only day of rain in a two week period, so that's awesome. But as I told the sheriff, I was pretty sure no matter what day we picked, it was going to be the day that it rained. So we do have a tent that is getting set up, so there will be some weather protection, but that will be tomorrow morning at nine thirty out at eight hundred East Pacific Avenue. And our contractors from Turner have been out there and put down some rock. So there's actually a place for people to park when they get there and look forward to see. So there's actually a place for people to park when they get there and look forward to seeing. Folks out there tomorrow morning. Speaking of the jail, there is another contractor outreach meeting that will be. A week from tomorrow, November the 3rd at 1:30 at the Expo Center in the 4H Hall. You may recall that we had one of these previously, I think a couple of you actually dropped by. And and saw some of the contractors that were in attendance that day. Turner was very impressed with the number of local contractors that came out for that first one. And so they're doing a second one. So if you know of contractors. That is another opportunity for them to be involved in the jail project. So excited about that. And then last but not least, certainly. We, I keep mentioning to you a visioning session. So I said the next time I came back, I'd come with some specific plans. So we are going to target Monday, December 13th for that. Put it on the the master calendar, but ask each of you to make sure that that date will work for your schedules. And I do have a facilitator lined up. From our meeting with the administrators around the state last year or last week. It's somebody who got really good reviews or firm and still working on a location. Kansas Wesleyan has offered to host us, but we're trying to see if we can come up with another location. Because some logistical things on that day. So moving forward with those plans. And then that's all. To talk about with respect to meetings. Two other items to just mention. First is our natural gas contract. You may recall that we had a cold snap back in February. Got a big bill that generated the whole conversation around how we procure natural gas for county facilities. Brought an item to you all, you authorized me to go negotiate a contract. Was hoping to bring that to you today because our current contract expires on Sunday. Don't have a contract for you today. The gentleman that I have been working with since February. Resigned from symmetry, his last day was October 15th. And he gave me the names of a couple of people who were supposed to be taking over his accounts. And they have not contacted me despite a couple of emails from me, so. I'm not sure where that leaves us. If I can't get ahold of them in the next day or two, I think we'll probably be trying to switch back to Kansas Natural Gas. Starting Monday. So that is not what I was hoping to be. In a position to bring to the commission, but that is where we are. So I just wanted to update you on that. And then finally, just to mention that. Our first grant program under the American Rescue Plan Act, our water and wastewater grants. That application period is now open as of last Friday. So if folks from our smaller municipalities, rural water districts, private water and sewer systems. Are interested, all of that information is on our webpage at. Saline.org/coronavirus/ARPA. We have a grant guide. We have a YouTube video that talks about the process and we have the application itself. And those will be due back November 29th. So just mention that. I think that's all I have today. Happy to answer any questions.
No, but I have a quick question is. Where we're at on the situation of the antennas for the EMS. Or towers?
I do, and we will be reporting to you on that next Tuesday. Yes.
All right. Item four.
Commissioners comments?
I just have comments. I was attended the KAC conference last week and and a lot of staff from Saline County was there. And I hope everybody got it out of as much as I did. There was some really neat informational items and. The county commissioner meetings that we had. On Wednesday was really a very, very good. Put together, a lot of the same issues are for almost every county out there that I talked to is. The issues with the housing, the recruitment of people coming to the communities. Ever, everybody's in the same boat, so it's a. It's a hope we can find some people to attract to Saline County. So anyway, that's about all I had. Any other comments? Item five.
Announcements. I do have an announcement. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are early voting in our office this week, eight to five. On Saturday, we will also be open from 10 to 2. And then Monday, November 1st, we are open from 8 a.m. to noon. Then on Election Day, voters will have to go to their polling locations. Those will be open from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. And I just wanted to remind the commission that we will have canvas on November 15th. At 9 a.m. in room 107B.
Okay.
Any other announcements? Any comments? Okay, at this time, make, we need to run into an executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the. Non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss. Department head performance evaluation for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and that we recess an executive session under the non-elected personnel executive session to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. To discuss. Personnel for 10 minutes and convene at 10:23. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are out of executive session and back into a regular session. Any other comments or anything? No action at this time. So at this time, meeting adjourned. Thank you.